I think I take the turkeys to Canada. One of those sounds.
At six o'clock, we're going to bring the December ninth city council meeting to order, and we will begin with roll call, please.
Sarchet?
Here.
Savage?
Here.
Walters?
Here.
Vogel? Otis?
Ask for a motion in a second to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All, uh, roll call, please.
Savage?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel? Otis? Sarchet?
Yes.
Item four is public hearings. It's time to close the regular meeting and open the public meeting for the transfer of interest in real property to Central Iowa Waterworks. Jenny, when was the notice published?
November twenty-nine.
Any written comments received for or against the proposed transfer?
No, sir.
At this time, we'd have a staff report. That would be Chelsea.
Thank you. Uh, this public hearing tonight is regarding the transfer of the water treatment plant from the city of Polk City to Central Iowa Waterworks. Um, just transferring this asset is one of the final steps regarding the, um, twenty-eight E, twenty-eight F agreement with Central Iowa Waterworks. So last year, the city council approved joining and becoming a founding member of the regional entity known as Central Iowa Waterworks. Um, so finalizing the transfer of assets and approving, uh, the operating contract, which is going to be on the agenda later tonight, are some of the final steps that Polk City needs to take. Um, the transfer of assets is just specific to the water treatment plant. That's all I have. Thank you.
Anyone present who wishes to be heard for or against the proposed transfer? I need a motion then to close the public hearing and reopen the regular meeting?
So moved.
Second.
And, uh, roll call?
Otis?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Moving on then to four A one. I need a motion to approve resolution, resolution twenty-two-four dash one fifty-five, approving the transfer of interest in real property to CIWW and authorizing execution of documents of transfer for water production and supply facilities. Motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion from council? Roll call then.
Vogel?
Yes.
Otis?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Moving on to, uh, four B then, public hearing four B. It's time to close the regular meeting and open the public meeting on amending the twenty-sixteen Polk City Comprehensive Plan. Jenny, when was the notice published?
November twenty-nine.
Any written comments received for or against the proposed amendment?
No, sir.
At this time, we would, uh, request staff to provide a report. Travis?
The council's consideration tonight is proposed amendment number fourteen to the Polk City Comprehensive Plan. Um, this is really a cleanup matter, um, to reflect a number of different things that have happened over the last several years, to bring, um, some of these maps up to date with various ongoing things through this, throughout, um, Polk City. Um, generally speaking, all the maps will include, um, the most recent Polk City, or the Polk County GIS data for parcel mapping. Um, that would have been as of like the first week in November is when we would have pulled that data. Um, so that would be the most current of whatever Polk County had available. That'll be shown in all of the maps that have the parcel data. And then, all of the maps, there may be some slight shape changes to meet parcel lines, new street alignments, those kinds of things. Um, just to kind of clean up the map as we were updating, um, these various items. Um, we'll start first with the future land use plan. So item number one is the land uses of nine oh five, ten ninety, and fourteen oh one West Bridge Road, um, as well as ten-ten Tyler Street have been changed from mixed use to commercial. Um, they were previously shown as commercial, or as mixed use. They're now commercial to reflect the, um, ongoing use of those parcels. Um, sixteen hundred West Broadway Street and two hundred South Fourth Street are being changed to Civic, um, to reflect Polk City's ownership and intended uses or current uses of those sites. Um, a minor update to Leonard Park to reflect the actual park layout. A portion of that park was previously shown, um, as part of the Leonard Senior Living high, or higher density residential. Um, so we cleaned that up. Um, the ma, or a major one that you'll see throughout these maps that I won't repeat as we look through each map is the Collector Street that runs from North Side Drive down to, um, South Side Drive. Um, east of the backwaters of the Barrier Dam have been revised to reflect the northern location of its connection with North Side Drive, um, in the Monarch Crossing subdivision. And then, um, the commercial, or the connection at Antler Ridge, based on the approved preliminary plats. Um, we updated Creekview Estates to match the preliminary plat. Um, Big Creek Commons Plat one, there was an error where the Civic, um, from the school site spilled into some of the single-family lots, so we brought that into conformance. Um, and then the addition of proposed park in the Four Seasons Polk City subdivision, based on the previously approved preliminary plat. Um, just to make it clear that the expectation is that there's a parkland up there. We'll go next to the major streets plan. Um, we already tax, actually talked about both of those, the revision between North Side Drive and South Side Drive, and then Creekview Estates. Um, the sanitary sewer system map, we updated to reflect the findings from the twenty-twenty-two sewer studies of the southeast, northeast, and north trunk sewers. Um, parks and trails, so we added, um, an Antler Ridge Park in its location based on the preliminary plat. Um, we updated the trail layout to mirror the revised Collector Street layout from North Side Drive to South Side Drive. Um, we included the most current layout of the Polk City Junction Trail, um, from, uh, the north corporate limits through town, down Second and Bluff, down Broadway, uh, through the crossroads at the Lakes, um, subdivision. So that reflects the most current layout as, um, decided by this council. Um, addition to that Four Seasons Polk City Park, and then a revision to the park that was originally in the Bergren Farms LLC parcel. It's now in the Gateway Crossing subdivision based on the new, um, zoning and land uses of that high-density residential versus, um, burdening the Bergren Farms piece with, which is slated for, uh, low-density residential. Um, all the park changes in that map also carry to the park service areas, and then we added, um, the Polk City Regional Park and updated those service areas to reflect the current layouts. Um, and then, both future land use plan and the park layouts have been adjusted to reflect the current uses of those areas, um, whether it be based on preliminary plat, final plats, or some step in between. Happy to answer any questions, have any further discussion?
Counsel, any questions?
Good updates. Travis, I, I like where we're going on this and also appreciate the work that goes into, um, updating our now eight-year-old comprehensive plan. Is that, so first question, is that a ten-year cycle typically, or do we, I know I've seen it before, and I can't remember when we've got planned for the next comprehensive?
I would, I would say usually twenty-year, but we have done quite a few amendments, and since Polk City has changed, we may not meet that twenty-year guideline. So we may want to consider a new comprehensive plan fifteen years.
Okay. Um, and where I was going with that is with, so the, the updates here are great. I, I am a little bit concerned with the things that were taken out from P&amp;Z. It does seem like there's a pretty big disconnect from, quite honestly, where I'm at and where the board, the P&amp;Z Board is at, and kind of the path we've been working down, um, uh, with Snyder, and I want to figure that out. So, um, and I don't want to get in the way of what they're doing, but I do think, uh, maybe a joint session down the road might behoove us all. Um, or if we're getting close enough to the point where a broader review works as well, so.
I guess that, that is worth mentioning. So, um, because of the timing of all of this, we did take anything related to the Whitetail Parkway realignment out of this amendment for the purposes of making sure that your maps were current, so that as staff starts to meet with potential developments as we go, get into this new year. That's kind of the timing and why it, why we're breaking this amendment into two separate ones.
Okay.
Is to make sure that we could get everything that P&amp;Z had no objections to, um, adopted so that we can use it, we can hand it out to folks. It's, you know, public, a, a firm public document, and then we're gonna, we're gonna continue to work through, um, the Whitetail Parkway stuff with P&amp;Z.
And to be clear, I, I'm not trying to speak for them or even influence them, let them do their thing, but, um, I do think some of the, the, the disconnect items are substantive, and if, uh, perfect example, um, I'll quote Ron, you know, the, the pass-through traffic and, and how we're addressing those as, as the primary example, but other things as well. So, um, anyway, happy to, to let those, let those discussions continue and revisit it down the road, but appreciate the stuff that's in here tonight. I'll make a motion if nobody else has.
Hold on just a sec. Uh, anyone present who wishes to be heard for or against the proposed amendment? And now we have a motion to close the public hearing and reopen the regular meeting, and we need a second?
Second.
And a roll call on that.
Savage?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Otis?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
So I then need a motion to approve resolution twenty-two-four dash one seventy, approving the comp plan amendments. Motion?
So moved.
Second.
And roll call.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Otis?
Yes. Next item is the public comment time. This is the time and place for comments for any item other than those that are a public hearing. Jenny, did we have anybody, uh, submit cards prior to our meeting?
No, sir.
Is there anybody in the audience who would, uh, like to speak at this time who didn't get a card filled out? Then, okay, hearing none. We will move on to item number six, consent items. I'll ask for a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
And roll call.
Otis?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Moving on to item number seven, business items. Go Polk City presentation of annual chamber report and request for FY twenty-six funding. Stacy?
I have a PowerPoint. Do I just plug that in?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Easy enough.
This is our first real test, so.
It is. Thanks.
Look at that.
Oh, look at that. Okay.
That's really open for a picture of your daughter, Stacy.
Sorry, the actual presentation. I tried to be prepared. So thank you all for letting me speak today. Um, I'm here to ask once again for the support of the city for Go Polk City. Um, last year, I came up here three weeks into the role, um, to do this ask, so this year I feel a lot more prepared, and I'll have a way better understanding of, um, what Go Polk City is and what we're doing. So, um, our mission is to empower businesses and stimulate economic growth through advocacy, support, and resource sharing. We commit to fostering a thriving business climate, encouraging community development, promoting Polk City as a prime destination for commerce, tourism, and living. Um, this year, we've seen a ton of business growth in Polk City. Um, we've had these thirteen businesses join locally in Polk City and open. Um, twelve of them have storefronts, and we've had more that have joined from outside of the community, too. Um, these were just some highlights of, of businesses that have opened in Polk City in twenty-twenty-four. So that was pretty great growth to see. Um, we welcomed two new board members to Go Polk City, so going from nine to eleven, which was nice. Um, the addition of Suzie Sheldahl, uh, with Realty One, and then Sarah Bezosky, um, from On With Life. We had, ooh, too far, several, several events. We did fourteen ribbon cuttings. Um, Go Polk City took over the citywide garage sale, which doesn't seem like a lot, but when you pull the placer data, the citywide garage sale brought in nine thousand people, um, to Polk City on those two days, which I thought was pretty great for a garage sale. Um, our farmers markets, each Thursday through the summer, the placer data showed that they brought in fourteen thousand people. Um, not every Thursday, but all the Thursdays throughout the summer, which I thought was pretty incredible as well. Um, are, we had a market manager that was a volunteer, and she did a great job organizing and getting everything to go together. We had a lot of great bands and a ton of fun. Um, we also had Fall Fest, which was a success, trunk or treat, and then Light Up Polk City just last week, so that was always, always super fun. Um, our Four Seasons Festival, our attendance was around three thousand nine hundred, which for the weather, I felt like was pretty good. Um, we did a few things, we tried to bring things back to kind of how they were in the past this year. So we had the return of a timed five K and eight K. Our golf tournament sold out, and that was Friday with a nice early shotgun start, so that worked out nicely. Uh, we changed the layout. We brought the Bill Riley Talent Show back to the square, um, added two new games of caveman golf, and then a disc game, um, inside the beer tent. So those were all fun and well-received. Other things we've worked on this year are economic development. Um, the Advis Kisi for Allure, I got to grab my little picture off the news, so that was kind of fun. Um, we've implemented placer. So before this year, we would always get placer data from the Greater Des Moines Partnership, and this year, we decided, since we were able to, um, go ahead and help pay for part of that, to grab our own data and be able to look at it as often as we want and share the different things as needed, um, with developers, and it's just great data to have, to know how, you know, we can do better at marketing, or, you know, what maybe people are looking for. So when they leave Polk City, where are they going to? So what are some things that we could bring here to kind of help, help with that? Um, so that's been great to implement. Um, I've also done on our website, we've redone the website, we have an economic development section, which is now improving. Um, Travis sent me a whole bunch of information to update on that section, too, so, uh, but we have it making it easy for developers or people that are interested in Polk City to find all the information when they need it. Our financial snapshot, so Go Polk City is funded through membership dues, sponsorships, grants, and I have events on here because eventually we'll get to that, um, where events are helping give us funding. Right now, events are not helping us get funding. We are fortunate enough to be able to, um, cover the costs when our sponsorships aren't covering things that events, um, cost, events are expensive. So, um, thankfully, that is on the plan. Um, for twenty-twenty-five, we are working on a strategic plan. We actually have our very first meeting tomorrow with the Greater Des Moines Partnership to get started on a strategic plan to continue to build Go Polk City and help it, um, do what it's supposed to within the chamber and economic development. We are adding another board member. Um, we're still going to stay at eleven on the board, however, we have one person leaving, so adding someone new to help, um, freshen up the board again and kind of, you know, keep us moving. So we've, that's been a great, that's been in the plan anyway, with to have people kind of rotate off and hurry to help people come in and, um, change it up. And we'll continue to work on our economic development initiatives. Continuing networking, talking with developers, um, meeting with each of you to see what, what you would like to see from Go Polk City. Um, continue to grow our community events, drawing people into Polk City and trying to get more community engagement. We just think that that's important. With the use of placer data, it'll help us grow our marketing and make, um, make sure that we're being profitable in every way that we can. We're also going to work on increasing membership growth and engagement with our current members. Um, so it's very important. What we use your funding for is to help pay for salaries of people that are working at Go Polk City. So it would be myself, um, Mary, our fiscal agent, and then next year, we're bringing on a market manager to help us. Um, LaShawna last, last year did a ton of work for free, and so we only felt like it would be even more beneficial to help her, um, in that position by having, making, having it a paid position. Um, do you guys have any questions for me?
Counsel, questions, comments?
Can you, um, Stacy, thank you first of all for a year into the role. Um, I, I keep trying to wrap my head around economic development and, and the role of the chamber, right? Um, can you talk a little bit more about, one of your bullet points was networking, communication developers. Kind of talk a little bit more about what that is?
Yeah.
What that contains of?
Yep. So what, what that has meant for me this year so far, too, and that's something, when I started last year, I was kind of like, okay, how does this, how does this work and how, how do I understand it? Um, something that I did this year was I would reach out to different developers, or like I've met with ATI Group several times. Um, they have developments, they have the land at Parker and Bridge Road. Um, and just in talking with them, they also have land north of town that they've been, um, they're looking to develop eventually. So just sitting down, talking to them about, I've showed them some placer data, um, kind of given them ideas on things that Polk City might like or need or want to see. Um, kind of reached out within my network, too, to different people to say, hey, here's a great opportunity if, you know, this house was for sale at Third and Bluff. I'm terrible with street names, so I'm hoping that that's right. Um, you know, trying to like push people to say, hey, this is a great opportunity. Here's, the bike trail's gonna come right past here. Um, things like that. Chelsea has, um, had me sit in on a few meetings, too, with, you know, different stages of people turning in. I, I sat in on one with, um, early, early on. Um, that was good and really informative to kind of, uh, let me know the process and how things work. And then the other side of economic development, I've been in talking with all of the business owners in town, um, and definitely people who have changed things with their buildings or, um, built, built buildings, um, to kind of see like how their process went and what, you know, what their thoughts were and, um, so that I could give that feedback back to everyone else.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
So do you have any, any feedback from those, uh, businesses that built?
Yes.
New construction in town and?
Yeah, so there, there's been a lot of good feedback. I think that, um, one thing that we're going to talk about our next board meeting, too, um, is putting out a survey, like that was mentioned before, to kind of gather it all to see, to look for trends, right? So we know that we want the positives and the negatives, all of it, and just to kind of see where the trends are to know what, um, what would be good feedback, to see if anything needs changed or improved, or if we're doing, you know, just amazing at all of those things.
I'm interested in figuring out what our friction points are.
Yeah.
With those kinds of processes, and if there's things that we can smooth out, or whether those are necessary friction points.
And that's something that I think that the survey would kind of pull out, just to kind of see what's, see what's out there and how things are going.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful. Again, back to what's economic development, I think it depends on the community, and it depends on where you are with things, and I think this is fitting of where we are right now. You know, we, we've brought a lot of businesses. We don't have a lot of room right now for developments, but we do in the future as we look ahead. So I think something like that would draw out our selling point.
Yeah.
Of, hey, here's what we do really great, come to Polk City. But then, yeah, if there are things that are challenges, uh, you know, and maybe some things are just going to be challenges, and we're okay with it.
Right.
But if there are things we can overcome, that would be really useful information as well.
Yeah, wonderful.
I think, from my perspective, Stacy, I, I think you're doing an outstanding job. I had forgotten that it was three weeks in last year when you were here, and, uh, it's, it's hard to associate, uh, your first year and, um, kind of the normal things, because you've done so much more than I would have expected. I, as I stated last year, still do have concerns with the spend here, um, based on the results, which I think are trending in the right way, but, um, communications have been an issue. I'm not sure any of the things that were kind of stipulated last year were followed up on. I think there've been some, um, ethical, um, concerns about how things have operated as well, too. Um, I do want to ask, though, so there've been a couple economic development groups that have been in the news lately, and can be most prominently, I think Urbinale as well, although I'm less familiar with that. Have you guys had an audit done of, uh, your books at any point recently?
Not since I've been around. Have we ever had an audit done?
I know, so we do for, that's something we've talked about, too, as, um, I know Brandon serves on that board as well, so we're like, anything that you can learn from there, from that situation, you know, of course, please bring it back. Um, our setup is a little different. We're still doing things pretty old-school, which is pretty nice. Um, we have Mary, who is the, our-
Bookkeeper.
Bookkeeper, and she is there to question everything and, um, does monthly reports. Everything's very transparent, so no worries there, but would an audit be?
Yeah.
Something to think about, of course, yeah.
And to be clear, not associating anything that happened in either of those situations with anything here, but I think we are handing over seventy-five thousand dollars in, a year, and have been for quite some time, um, to a use with, with no direct insight. Um, I think last year, we got a one-pager on the budget that I don't think was comprehensive, so, um, some accountability there, I think, would be nice.
Anything else from counsel? All right then. Uh, let's move on to item A one then, resolution twenty-two-four dash one sixty-eight, obligating funds from the Urban Renewal Tax Revenue Fund for appropriations to the payment of annual appropriation tax increment financed obligations to Go Polk City fiscal year twenty-six. I'll ask for a motion in a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
And roll call.
Otis?
Yes.
Sarchet?
No.
Savage?
Uh, yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Moving on then to, uh, seven B, resolution twenty-two-four dash one sixty-nine, approving operating contract with Central Iowa Waterworks, also known as CIWW. Ask for a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
And a roll call.
Savage?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Otis?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Moving on to item C.
I do want to add a comment on there. So this is, I think the, the sale of property was significant. The operating, uh, agreement is also, operating contract, excuse me, is also significant, and something that we've talked about before with the new structure with, uh, CIWW, as opposed to what Des Moines Waterworks had structured their plan around, um, will cause us to revisit how we charge, uh, particularly our irrigation meters, but, um, water holistically. So, um, something to, to hopefully take up, uh, here in the early spring when we do that.
Jenny, we've had the motion in the second, haven't we?
And the roll call.
And we've had roll call on B.
Correct.
C then, um, third reading of Nordance twenty-two-four dash twenty-three hundred A, adding chapter one hundred two, stormwater. A motion in a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
And a roll call?
Otis?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Moving on then to item D, Snyder and Associates' October Engineering Services invoice in the amount of forty-four thousand, one hundred twenty-one dollars and seventy-eight cents. A motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
And roll.
Otis?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Walters?
Upstain.
Vogel?
Item eight, mayor designations for twenty-twenty-five. Pro temp Jeff Walters, liaisons Parks Commission, Nick Otis, idol Rob Sarchet, planning and zoning commission Jeff Savage, and library board Mandy Vogel. Moving on then to item nine, reports and particulars. We'll begin with, um, staff. Anything from staff? Yes, sir.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring two things to council's, um, attention here tonight. Last Friday, we had Light Up Polk City.
Beer lighting.
Light Up Polk City. Uh, no, uh, we got some placer data just today. It's typically seventy-two hours delayed. Uh, we had about nineteen hundred people up at the square with an average time of about sixty-five minutes spent up there. So I call that a-
spent up there, so I call that a win. I also want to acknowledge, so many people helped with that. Obviously, my, my co-host, Stacy with Go Polk City, but all the businesses, the civic groups, my fellow department heads, you know, all, all of them really helped make that a success. So thank you, guys, for helping make that special, as it is every year. The last thing, on a not-so-joyous thing, you might have seen some caution tape on the square, perhaps it was a result of those 1,900 people on the square Friday night, but we do have a piece of equipment that did break over the weekend, the wave runner, that you often see kids trying to catapult into the sky. So we do have that cautioned off right now as we look into what the solution to fix it is. So a timeline does not exist at this point, so you will see some cones up there until that is resolved.
So first of all, good job with everything, and I'll shut up about my name. Have we talked to the manufacturer? Because I specifically then remember them saying that it was unbreakable.
So we purchased that as part of the 2016 square improvements.
Yep.
The manufacturer, Excent Play, went out of business shortly before 2020. So, yeah, nobody to really hold accountable. But we are, you know, so obviously, some parts have not been manufactured for four years, they still do exist, it might just be harder to track them down at this point. So we're gonna, you know, go over every bridge we can to figure out solutions, so. You might see some caution tape up there for longer than I'd like, though. Just want to give you a heads up.
Thank you, Jason. Anybody else? Any other staff member? Yes, Amy.
I just wanted to say, this is al, I think it's almost my 700th meeting that I've been to, and this obviously is my last one, and I just want to tell you, in my, in my, between the turn of the page, I'm saying, Joey, that night, I missed all of it, and it's working.
Thank you, Amy. We have appreciated you being here in so many ways. City manager?
I was just gonna make mention to Amy. Thank you for everything you've done for Polk City. You've been one of the best city attorneys that I've ever worked with in the profession, and you're gonna leave some pretty big shoes to fill, so thank you for everything you've done.
And enjoy the rest of your time doing whatever you want to do.
Monday nights, I have a council meeting.
So how about from counsel? Anything from counsel?
Yeah, I, I had Amy on my list, too. I, 1990?
1994.
1994. And ballpark, when was the last time you missed a meeting? A long time ago.
Yeah, I don't miss very often. I haven't missed very often a meeting.
That's exactly where I was going, and, and I think anybody who does that, that comes to a meeting, whatever it is, with that consistency, and the, the net, you know, if you think about what a city attorney does, or at least what, I should say, what I think about what a city attorney does and should do well is keep us, keep us out of the headlines, keep us out of, and, and so when there's that sort of, you know, you do your job by not causing attention, and, and you've been, so I, I've not learned people's facial expressions very well historically, but I've learned yours as I've run afoul from them from time to time, and so I, I have very much appreciated your time, and both in terms of the advice you give and how you give it, and very happy for you, looking forward to, in one form or another, hearing about your trip, well deserved after all these weeks of showing up here, so thank you, thank you, thank you. I, I did have, and I don't know how to transition, so I'm just gonna keep talking, but I did have one item to bring up, so I talked about a survey that Stacy was working on, and I'd like to add to, and I know it requires additional approval, but I would, whatever the protocol is, to suggest adding, in one of the first couple meetings in, in January, a discussion around the survey that she's working on, so. Again, if there's somebody else that wants to second that or whatever.
Yeah, I think that would be valuable if they proceed with that and then to schedule a work session to kind of work through any of the results. I'd be in favor of that.
Okay. So I guess that, any, anything else from any other council members?
Well, since, just real quick, since this is our last meeting for the year, I want to thank staff and all of our city employees for a great 2024. I appreciate everyone's hard work and diligent dealing with us, right? You know, so I want to say thank you, have safe and happy holidays, and this was a great first year for me. This was new, it was a learning experience. Hopefully, I didn't upset anybody too much, but look forward to 2025. Amy, thank you so much for all your service. I got to work with you for a year. I've seen you before come into meetings, but enjoy your next chapter, and I think that's about it.
Nothing new, but I will also wish Amy the best. I'm very, very excited for you and happy for you, and I will also thank everybody that was involved with the square lighting, as I still call it. You can tell this is old timers around here, been in town for a while, we can't change. But no, it's, continues to be that magical thing for everyone here in town, and as my kids have gone from the magic of Santa to the, hey, there's bingo at the Legion, you know, I mean, there's literally something for every age to enjoy there, and the countdown is still just magical, no matter how old you are. So thank you. Congratulations, Amy. The, the number of meetings that you and I have been in over the years, not just here, but lots of different organizations, committees, the shoes that need to be filled are gonna be tough, but enjoy your time off.
I guess I'll, everybody, everybody else has said something, so I'll, I'll go ahead and, I will echo a lot of what Jeff Savage said. First year, you guys have made this easy, and I appreciate that, I really do. Amy, thank you.
Okay, that's everybody. So my only additions are, you know, of course, Light Up Polk City was great fun, so many people there, and it just absolutely says the best things about our community and people coming together, and thank you for the hard work in, in pulling it off. The other thing I did want to mention is that last meeting, I talked about having a municipal park committee, and as of today, we have the members of that committee established, and we will be planning to meet on January 9th for the very first meeting of that group. So looking forward to moving that discussion forward and keeping counsel in the loop along the way of how that is going, and we will go from there. I already said it, Amy, you know, I'm like a lot of people here, I, I understand the look, because I've gotten it before, and so I benefited greatly from having you in that position, and our city did as well, so thank you very much and good luck with everything you do. So with that, we're gonna ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign.